Yes, the attendance section of the minutes are incorrect, so please approve them with those corrections. We had Mayor Rayland and Councilor Kramer were out, but they are not listed as absent, so... I have one point of concern tonight. We are having ongoing issues with our accounting software, Banyan, specifically when it comes to balancing, which is why you haven't yet seen the end of January accounts yet, the bank reconciliation specifically. It seems that it is a problem across the board for other communities as well. So I'm working with both Banyan and our auditors to find how to best correct that issue and represent our financials more accurately. What is happening is checks that were not supposed to have been cleared were marked as cleared in November and December. They were supposed to have been cleared in January. So our book balance is off by that amount, making the balance out of sync with our bank account balance. So we'll get that corrected. I'll give those financials to you as soon as possible, but I just wanted to let you know what's going on with those.
So wastewater plants doing good. Construction's moving along. The only hiccup that might be common is they're having a heck of a time getting the roofers to show up for the filter building. In about a couple of weeks' time, we'll be tearing into the basement at the wastewater plant, changing out the research pumps. We're going from the five they have down, of which are not operational right now, to just three to supply the trickling filters. So then Waterside, this time of year, just like last year, things seem to want to break on me. So we lost our meter reader. I was looking at prices for that. The cheapest I'm going to be able to find is 1,200 bucks, unfortunately. And the earliest we could get one is September. So I'm going to need to replace that so I can get meter reads some of these locations. The meter's not exactly easy to get to. And then you've got to wait for business owners to be there to get into a lot of these buildings, too. Other thing we had done, we had the antenna at the booster station repaired. That was damaged. It's been damaged. It's been costing us a lot of overtime every year because it loses communication with the water tower up at Laskin. So we got that fixed. Everything seems to be working good now, and it should pay for itself in just over a year as far as overtime costs. Then the other thing we had is we lost a power supply on one of our units in the basement at the water plant. This unit's responsible for giving us filter turbidities and pH, both influent and affluent, at the water plant. That needs to be replaced. So we ordered one of those up. That's going to be about 800 bucks, just under. So we'll get that in hopefully by the 21st, they figured, and we can get that replaced. Should be plug-in place, so we should be able to do it ourselves. But that's about all I got aside from agenda items. No freeze-ups yet. I just sent the notice out to Betsy today. I'm looking at having it put in the paper on the first and second week of March. Floyd usually waited a little longer than I did. Last year, I put it out end of February, so right in the timeline. And we'll have it posted on the city website as well.
I have nothing to add.
Maybe just one quick thing to kind of give a big thank you to the city crew and a reminder to the residents with the snowbanks getting taller and taller. Aurora had a good reminder to the residents and shoppers this weekend. I think our ordinances pretty much follow Aurora's, the parking on the street, and pushing snow out onto the roads, so just everybody cooperate. And like you said, the city crew has been doing a wonderful job keeping our streets clear, so that's it.
I do have a report from Sues Hours for the library board. They are upgrading their hoopla account, so now more people can take out an audiobook or movie at once. You don't have to wait for your title to be available, so they've updated that. Their children's area is done. They got that partially through a grant from the Arrowhead Library System, and many families have been using it. And their winter reading program will go on through the end of February with all their prize drawings held on March 1st. That's it. It's on the 23rd, and I will be in attendance along with Councilor Kramer.
Very nice donation from the Legion in the amount of $75, so what do we have to do with this?
You do have to pass the resolution accepting the donation and indicating that you will be utilizing it for heart monitors.
Any questions on this? Not hearing any. Motion to approve?
Motion?
Motion by Councilor Zinn, support. Support by Councilor Kramer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.22, Hoyt Lake Fire Department Officer Resignation. Letters to inform you that I'm resigning as the Hoyt Lake Fire Department Secretary effective March 2nd, 2022. Plan retiring the next few months from the department. Believe it is the best allowing another acting member the opportunity to take on this role at this time. Sincerely, Anne Breland. Motion to accept? Motion by Councilor Kramer, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Kramer. I'll let her know that you two accepted that here tonight. 11.3, Hoyt Lake Fire Department?
All vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. 11.3, Hoyt Lake Fire Department Secretary Appointment? Oh, okay, just to look back at that.
Yep.
The fire department is recommending Karatsky for the secretary replacement. Motion to approve? Mayor, so this was just to accept its application for it? Okay, now they're going to have a vote. Okay, business meeting, and then...
It'll come before the council after the next business meeting.
Okay, the only concern is the fire department cannot go on it. It's a council vote.
When they do nominations for people who've run for an office, that's how they handle it?
Then they recommend to the council, and it's still up to the mayor or the council to accept their recommendation or not, is how they've done it in the past.
I'll be in contact with Chief Housewoman.
Okay.
So we will not address that to the press? All right, 11.4, ordinance number 230, amending the 2022 P schedule. I think it's just an updated. We've made a bunch of different changes. I think this is the final one. This does work with the book, do you think?
It's, yes, it's the changes that are in that are not in the book, but they're pretty minimal, and it'll be on our website. And anytime anyone calls in, we'll have the updated information. There were a couple other changes that I made. We have had females attending our no-check hockey, so I did change the name from men's no-check to just no-check hockey. So that was just the one other change that happened between last meeting and this one.
All right. Motion by Councilor Popps, support? Support by Councilor Kramer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.5, SEH Agreement for Services for Midway Shelter Project?
Good evening. You should have in front of you an agreement for professional services for us to help you guys get submitting documents together for a shelter building. Becky and Kenny and I met, oh, I don't know, a month and a half ago now, and reviewed some of the things you guys would like to have. Kenny and I have had numerous conversations about how we would like to go about that. There is a shelter that he had seen in the city of Fargo, I believe, is where that one was at, and looking for something similar to that. Long story short, the agreement for professional services that we have there is to help you guys get some bidding documents together. We're also going to look at the site a little more specifically to what you have out here, make sure that the foundations that are designed will be correct. And then it's got a very limited construction services scope. Kenny's probably going to take a lot of the time watching him put it together. There was really no need for us to spend a lot of extra time doing that. So mainly to help you guys get a set of bidding documents together, get it bid, and then whatever we need to do, limited on construction services. So I can answer any other questions you guys may have, or maybe Becky's got some other information. I don't know.
Just for the council's owners, if you look on the second page of the schedule, April 15th, the final lines of the city, 25th, why the lights are lit, start construction.
The Water Carnival Committee is aware of this. I believe they have already rented, and they know the area will be under construction. And our public works will block it off, and there's significant progress.
And then a witness, Becky and staff, did get $50,000. Any other questions?
Just one question. I see that obviously mechanical and plumbing is not involved in the building, but electrical's not included also. Is that something that should be included and will need to be bid on, or...?
Good question. So the way we set this up is we set it up to, we're going to provide a performance specification for the building itself, and the electrical will be included in that. So the contractors, people will actually, we'll tell them what they want, and their guys will actually design it in as part of their service, so...
Any other questions? Hearing the motion to approve? Motion by Councilor Kramer, support?
I'll support.
Councilor Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.6, EMS Medical Director Agreement for Services. Mel, I don't know if you have anything on this?
I do not. I think, and there were questions that were brought to me, I don't know, unless anyone asked that anymore.
Any questions on this? Pretty much the same as what we had before?
The only thing, yeah, I noticed on the bottom of it, this is Dr. Michelle Almond.
Yeah.
Oh, I forget that. You move back here.
Where was that on here?
Section 1.
Section 1, right here. It's got Dr. Michelle Almond, that's the medical director. Just need to change that.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Support?
I'll support. All right.
No, like I said, still waiting on roofers. We've been first on the list since December. Aside from that, they're moving right along. The roofing is going to hold up painting and electrical work inside, so that's why it's becoming a bigger deal.
Questions from the... What is the holdup, Jake, as far as they don't have personnel?
Personnel's one of the things. The other thing I've heard is they're on another job. They're trying to finish up, maybe not having the personnel, holding them up on that. All I'm hearing is hearsay on that, you know? So they're trying as hard as they can to get them in there. We're hoping maybe when the weather warms up in a couple of weeks, they'll come in, because the roof does need to be a certain temperature, be it we heat it and get it prepped, or, you know, weather just naturally warms.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll support.
Councilor Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.7, Bolton Bank Infiltration Storm?
All right. So we've had a lot of I and I come in, starting last year after the storm sewer construction project wrapped up. Last year, just after April, my flows for the wastewater plant doubled. In fact, they didn't go down until probably November, December of last year. So this is something that's not going to go away on its own. Eventually, we're going to have to address this. I know 20 grand isn't something we want to just throw away, but I'm going to be making budget cuts myself this year. We're going to try and haul all of our sludge on our own. I know originally I asked for about $56,000 to have a professional come in and haul it. If we can do it ourselves, we're going to save enough money to carry that. I'm also canceling the evaluation of the filters at the water plant until we have more money for that, because I think the I and I is going to be a bigger problem for me, and then my filter's failing. Flow's back to normal now, because the frost is deep enough. I figure the frost got to about four or five feet deep, and then the flow's cut out, and we're back to normal operating at about $300,000, $350,000 per day.
Matt, question. I've never heard of this happening because of the street project. I just have a hard time spending money on this right now.
I don't have a lot of details, but I think with the I and I, when you put sanitary sewer pipe down,
We only put sanitary sewer in brand-new on Andover, so...
Do you have any more details on that, but I'm not sure.
The reason, I think it came from the storm sewer project, is because when them storm sewers were put in, they were grounded up and sealed up pretty tight. I'm wondering if that didn't stop the groundwater from using that original source to drain away. I think what it did is found the next easiest place to evacuate, which was our sewer system, which unfortunately, that is beyond its life. I'm looking at if anything gets approved on this and we get to do stuff. I'm actually looking at lining the pipes. There's companies that do that. In fact, they got automated equipment that'll go up and hit some of the services, too, and line those as well, so it doesn't just go around into the people's services to their houses. So hopefully that can block it up. Well, that's going to be part of our investigation. We went through, when we were cleaning sewers last spring, he had a heck of a time trying to get in on Suffolk because the flows were so high to try and clean that. In fact, he didn't do the stretch all the way to the wastewater plant. So this is something we're going to have to do, just get in there, investigate, and find out. So I got small crew and only so much time, so...
So if we don't move on this tonight, Jake, if we wait until the flows come back up, is that going to hurt anything to make sure that this is what the problem is? I mean, right now, we're kind of guessing still. You're not 100% sure, and it possibly could be coming from somewhere else. I mean, I'm...
I can't think of anywhere else it would be coming from. This is the only change we made, and this is the first year we've seen this issue. I went back through five years of records, and this is the first... Last summer was the first summer we went up and stayed up like that. Normally, we have a jump in the spring, but then it goes away. So if we have a better idea of where it's coming from, I mean...
And when you're getting double the sewage, does that mean you're having to use double the treatment to get the numbers down to where they're at? And did that indicate that, that you added double your chemicals, or...?
So luckily, my chemicals aren't going up a whole lot. They are a little, but we're getting a lot of dilution with this because groundwater is typically pretty clean. But the problem I'm running into is my plant can only take so much per day. Can take, I think we're rated for $630,000 a day. I'd have to go look at the permit again. But when we're riding up that high on a normal day, and then we get a wet weather event, then that's when we run into trouble with structures flooding, bypasses, stuff like that that we'd rather not get into.
I guess my question to Matt is that this, this blowpipe is still under warranty till October. Maybe this spring, SEH should come back up. Let's take a look at it, see if something we put in wrong, or before we spend a bunch of money on something that I'm sure of right now. The easiest, how to ease resistance if you blow for that groundwater, it's all skill. But the storm sewer still leaks a little bit out of the wash. It's a bit of a heater, so... That there is, that makes a little difference. Otherwise, I don't know why it's rolling.
Yeah, Andover got brand-new, I think my mic's out. Andover got brand-new utilities, but you got Arlington, and why not? We're going through their contractors, I was putting in the storm sewer warranty and all that, to start seeing a higher flow of wastewater on the plant this season.
I think, I think, I think you guys come out this spring.
I wouldn't be in agreement with the mayor on this.
Yes, okay, so we are working on and have been working on, I think they did go out. Jake's was out, too. We have been working on the project closeout for quite some time now with the contractor, and they have all of their paperwork in with the exception now of the final lien waivers, basically saying they've paid their subs. Their $76,000 and some change is what they still owe their subs. And so in order to get their subs to sign off on final lien waivers, they got to be paid, and that's a pretty hefty chunk of change to expect a contractor to put out for their subs. So my suggestion is we release enough retainage, $76,000 and the change, so that Masabi Batumis can pay their subcontractors. There's still $30-some thousand in retainage being withheld. And then we can, once they pay their subs, they can get their lien waivers, and then we'll have all the paperwork, and then we can release the rest of it.
Good to be down, I know there's one of your questions, too. And the end of the warranty on this is October, is that right?
Technically, it hasn't started yet, because it doesn't start until the project closes out, so...
Okay, so we got plenty of time on that. Any other things? The sod work, and I know there's a bunch of C and junction signs, so it'll still be $30,000 covered.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Zinn, support?
I'll support.
Councilor Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.10, J-Way LLC is requesting its liquor license transferred to Hoyt Lake Serena for the mint, for the... For the no-check term. Okay? Now, J-Way LLC, that's the... Any questions on this? Comments? Motion to approve? Motion by Councilor Popps, support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Zinn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. 11.11, Fishery Point Management Contract?
Becky?
So Councilor... Councilor Popps and myself, and his supervisor, Senator, met with Tom French regarding the points and her contract. We discussed with him contract terms that he would be looking for. I wrote up a draft, directed with Councilor Popps and Kenny. He provided it to Tom to then review it. He reviewed it, came back with a negotiated point, which I then reviewed with Anna and Kenny again. That contract was a little easy in front of me. He thought it was a pretty fair contract to the management services. It is a one-year term, and that is primarily because we're going to make some significant changes as far as payment and electronic check prior to the location.
Councilor Popps, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think that the point that we're at, and we're going to have, basically the one after the management and not being able to make changes to the payment and checking. We recommended we go to the contract, because that's one of the many arguments what's going on. There's some of the community's computer age on the designation system. That's in line, because there's going to be some training for that, so...
Councilor Kramer or Councilor Kramer? I know you're both campers. Any comments?
My only question was for Mary's, but I think it's a... Our plan is to get that, hopefully have that implemented towards the end of the season. We have to have five on the board, it's official next year. And he's good, he moved out of the public. Yes, I have made it pretty clear that I would be on audit. We're making sure that there's only one camera on, always from the outside. We put some other ways in place to make sure that they're proper. Right now, I know, I think I've been asked by other community members, where you can sell all the extra supplies, such as wirewood, ice. Someone asked me, what's with the ice? Does it get the pumpers good? You know, like, is that a situation that you can give?
No, so ice, ice will more likely be provided, so if he gives us ice, we'll get that.
Any other concerns? I would like the motion to approve. Councilor French?
I'm not sure.
Motion to approve. Councilor French, all in favor? Councilor Kramer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Anything else to come in front of this? Mel, excuse me. Mel, do you have anything?
I, I don't really have anything.
Are you sure?
I, 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 I've been at the farm for a little over a week now, so I'm not sure.
Thank you for your report.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. I didn't want to be too upset.
Motion by Councilor... All in favor?
Aye.
Support by Councilor Zinn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Aye, everybody. Thank you.
Oh, I do need one thing. A ride to the fire.